Good evening. Today is March 23rd, 2021. This meeting of Georgetown County was now 5:33. And this meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. Mr. Carolina will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Will you stand, please, as we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and further to the best we can be as good stewards of the land and for the resources for the citizens of Georgetown County. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Caroline. Madam Clerk, for the record, please note that we do have a quorum present. There's a recommendation to move Report 15A concerning the nonprofit Spotlight up on the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda with the recommended change?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here's my problem in moving second, that the Report Number 15A be moved up on the agenda. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Oppose? We'll now have the nonprofit Spotlight presentation.
Good evening. I am Sarah Pope from SOS Care, and this is Kathy Grace. I'm the CEO and Kathy is our marketing director. We serve people with autism and intellectual disabilities in Ori and Georgetown counties. And we're going to share a little bit about some of the programs and the work that we do here for the community. So we're going to show you a short video clip, just a few minutes, and then we'll talk about some of the events that we have coming up.
So why not just sit and lay on our couch all the time and let our parents do things for us?
That'd be boring.
So boring, right? Where you can get up and get a job and do things for yourself. Will that make you feel powerful?
Yeah.
And that's why you guys are here. You're trying to improve yourself every single day, every week. You're really trying to do better.
SOS Healthcare is an organization that provides services to children and adults with autism and intellectual disabilities.
Darren, what does a cow say?
Moo!
A cow does say moo. Good job!
One in 59 children are currently being diagnosed with autism.
Whoa, whoa!
And one in 42 boys are diagnosed every year.
What? Dinosaur.
It is a national epidemic with no answers for why our children are being diagnosed at such a high rate.
High five.
Yeah!
When I first came here, you know, we had one program. We were serving, I think, 12 children. Last year, we served about 1,200 families, and we have 17 programs currently.
With disabilities becoming more prevalent, especially autism, people with autism are going to need to be hired. Just because they're different doesn't mean that they don't know how to do something or that they can't do something.
My daughter Summer is a young woman with autism, and so some of the services that we offer here at SOS were services that would be useful to her. And now she's in the Job Coach Program, and they helped her to get a really great job at Ripley's Aquarium as a mermaid.
Hi, this is SOS Healthcare, and this is Marie speaking.
I am an office assistant for SOS Healthcare, and I've been enjoying it every day and being new people and just contact with different companies. I just enjoyed the whole office atmosphere and environment.
All right, what is the first thing that we need?
Sorry, one cup of old-fashioned oats.
All right, find the oats. Where are the oats? I do a lot of life skills, like functional living skills. So we'll do anything from cooking to cleaning, safety skills, anything to get them to be as independent as possible. Some of them will live independently on their own, others may not, but we still want them to have those skills so they don't always have to depend on other people.
Sprinkle it around. Perfect. Now stir it.
Stir it!
Yep, hold right here.
I want to do that.
And I'm going to help you.
They taught us how to vacuum, take out the trash, but also other things, like change a light bulb and make your own meals. It's very beneficial because it teaches us how to make the right choices in life. You can make your own decisions. You feel like there's freedom there.
SOS did kind of help and just helped me on being responsible more than I was before. To second, just do the things I need to do on my own, not a parent behind my shoulder, and just do it my way and my time.
Oak Tree Farm is low-affordable income housing for individuals with autism or an intellectual disability. Every day, they go home and they live with their aging caregivers, which is a major issue across the nation, and there's no plan.
Summer's probably going to need to have a place of her own, and Oak Tree will provide that. And we all will have assurance when we're not here anymore that there'll be a safe place for our young people to live.
This would be a long time coming for me. I'm not the youngest person here, and my mom and dad always wanted this for me and live independently of them.
We have the most beautiful population, and that's what people don't always understand if they haven't been around it. They don't care about color. They don't care about if you can talk or not talk. They don't care about your behavior, really. And in their own way, they care about each other when they're together.
Being a part of these people's lives and helping them to, you know, make accomplishments that they probably couldn't make otherwise and being part of that, they've just changed my life for the better because they've made me realize what's really important in life.
When you're trying to navigate the diagnosis and figure out what to do, and then you have to figure out how to treat it on your own, that's probably one of the worst parts. But when you have an organization that can help you work through a lot of those questions, it's a huge comfort.
Am I more inspired and motivated because I have my own children? It probably does play a part in there. And I think they help me stay focused on the needs of not just my family, but other families. I was meant to be here to do this, no doubt.
The programs that we provide to the community in Ori and Georgetown, our goal is independence for everybody that we serve, and our hope is that we get everybody to a place where they can live as independently as possible. Our first residence moved into Oak Tree Farm, which is in Conway, four weeks ago. And we are working on our plans to build the next phase of the community, which will house the next 50 people with disabilities. So that's a little bit about what we do in our programs.
We serve people from two until, and our oldest person right now that we're serving is close to 50 years old, so we cover the lifespan. I'm going to let Kathy share just a couple of bits of information about events coming up.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity. I am a 30-year resident of the Walkamoneck, and it was amazing to me that I did not know this organization existed until someone contacted me about helping with this effort. So I know Georgetown County has its own challenges, especially as it relates to housing, and you all get to figure out those challenges as we go. But this particular property is 10 acres on Medlin Parkway on the bus route, and we are participating, as many of the other nonprofits are here in Georgetown County, with Palmetto Giving Day in an effort to move to the next phase of this particular development. The transitional home that the gentlemen are living in right now is beautiful, and as she said, they just moved in a little over a month ago and are doing beautifully. But the next phase is an apartment complex with 40 units and a clubhouse where there can be other life skills taught. So our capital campaign is kicking off now in conjunction with Palmetto Giving Day, which is May 4th. So mark your calendars for May 4th because I'm sure there are plenty of nonprofits here in Georgetown County that could use your support, and we do appreciate the opportunity to bring this project and hopefully other projects like it, maybe even in Georgetown County sometime in the future. So thank you all very much.
Are there any comments or questions from Council? I want to thank you all for presenting information on your particular organization. We appreciate it when you can inform the community as to what really exists there and can provide assistance for them. Thank you for coming in and sharing it with us. Really appreciate it. We move on into our public comment. County Council sets aside 30 minutes at the beginning of each meeting to allow for public comments. Members of the public who wish to address Council during the public input period should sign up with the Clerk of Council before the meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have five speakers signed up tonight, and each will have up to five minutes. The first is Chris Anderson. Mr. Anderson would like to speak last, so the next speaker is Terry Reed.
Just as a matter of information, please note that we do have a timer when everyone is speaking. Please be respectful of others and observe the timer. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I hope not to be five minutes. Good evening to everyone. I'm a resident from the Spring Gully community. With the previous two meetings that we had with our elected official, Ms. Johnson, we do feel that we have gotten some attention to a desperately needs of a hurting community. But however, there are still some unanswered questions that some of the taxpayers have. And we understand that working together is better, so that's what we're making the efforts to do, to communicate more, talk more, meet more, so that the needs of our community and where we want to begin, where we need to begin and where we need to start is important. But after hearing and addressing the drainage issues, sidewalk issues, roads that need attention, our playgrounds, lack of playgrounds for recreation for our kids, street lighting, et cetera, et cetera, most of the community members, after expressing this as a unit and as a group to Ms. Johnson, were still complex on why. And she had a change of heart in our previous meeting of willing to give out of that million, $300,000 to this community. But the question was, why so little, not even half, to a community that has so many needs? Even more than the library. You're talking where people are putting pumps in their living rooms and their dens to pump out water from whenever we have a hard rain. So the question the community has is why? Why the loyalty still to the library when this community has so many needs to be addressed, so many needs? Why such loyalty to the library? And that's the question that I have brought here from many members to why, when we've addressed and expressed the needs of this community? Why? And having gotten that answer. The change of heart was promising. It was good. It showed us that we're moving in the right direction to get the needs addressed in our community. So we do appreciate that. We do appreciate the listening ear. But we need more. The $300,000 out of the million, we feel that it's still not enough when we have county roads in that area that needs to be paved. Jaclyn Drive, Tiffany Lane, lanes that need attention. In one of the previous meetings, we had Mr. Ray Funny. Mr. Ray Funny was at the meeting. I want to, I have a quote here to support what the community has been saying about the constant neglect over the years. In the meeting on March 2nd, Mr. Ray Funny, the Public Service Director, he said in a statement that he didn't know our community was called Spring Gully. In other words, he didn't know we existed. And this came from, this is a man who was recognized by the American Medical Association for his efforts of achieving equity in the community shortly after. But he didn't know that our community existed. Now, when you're talking equality, when you're talking equity, that means no partiality. That means having no favoritism, there's no area in the county. But evidently, our area was left out for so many years. That's not equality. That's not equity. And he was awarded this medal shortly afterward. And congratulations to him, not to knock him, it's just that our argument is we have been neglected. And those words came out of his mouth, that he didn't know we existed out the Spring Gully community. So it makes our situation even sadder. It brings to light of how long we have been neglected. For over 44 years, one time in 44 years, a street in our community has been paved. One time in 44 years. It's just neglect. So we are happy that we've taken a step forward, but yet we still have more questions that are not being answered. And the plan that we have here that was laid out, that was given, the infrastructure improvement, a lot of these is three to six years away. Our roads, our community, don't have that type of time. Three to six years? We don't have that. We need immediate attention, and those are the answers that we need. When can we get this immediate attention that this community needs? That's my time. Thank you for your ears.
Dedrick Bonds.
Good evening. Members of Council, Mr. Chair. I'm a resident of the Spring Gully community, and I am somewhat, somewhat encouraged with the fact that when we raised our voices, there was a spirit seemingly of cooperation with this body, and we appreciate that. But it is not enough. When I think about the library, I have no art against the library system. I love it. I'm an academician, as I call myself. I'm a teacher, a trained historian. I have an affinity for the library. I like Mr. McEnville as a person. I admire his work as an administrator. But the library was already given money for an expansion. And as I think about it, it is just an expansion of a building, not of services for the community as a whole, but for a building. And I am seven years into this property that I purchased with my family and already have to replace my floor systems that have been compromised from lack of infrastructure, lack of drainage. It's just simply not enough. And while we can stand here and pat each other on the back for being civil with each other, it's simply not enough, and we've got to do more and do more quickly and call in all of the people and all of the parties that are culpable in making us whole. I understand that this does not solely rest on you as a body. So call in Carl Anderson. Call in whoever else we need to. Let's get the situation rectified. Let's get the situation rectified. I appreciate you again, but it is simply not enough when the integrity and the quality of lives are being called into question with lack of infrastructure, no sidewalks. And then for the last point I want to make on this three hundred thousand that we may get, can we please not throw money away? Make people do their jobs. If there are overgrown areas in the community, don't throw that three hundred thousand away to where people get paid to do jobs. I believe that there are supposed to be some routine neighborhood checks. Apparently, as Mr. Reed has said, our neighborhood has been neglected, not just during any of your terms, but previously. And it has showed, and the straw is beginning to break. Literally, the dams already have. Please, continue to stand with us, but don't just throw us pleasantries. Let's continue to find real solutions to a community's real problems.
Trannis Parker.
Good afternoon. I want to introduce myself as the newest council member. There's eight of us, there's eight of us now. Because until I get what's needed in my community, Spring Gully, and God willing, I'm gonna be to every single meeting you guys have, you're gonna hear my voice until you're sick and tired of it. I promise that. I have been sitting in my office one day, I'm gonna take all my five minutes. I was sitting in my office one day, and I thought about what represents Georgetown. Who is Georgetown County? And I thought about that thing. You guys are Georgetown County. If we fail as a county, it's because of you guys, each and every last one of you. You swore that you would uphold and protect and do what's right for these citizens. And if you know that he or she or he or he or he or him or the other one that's missing, if there's any missing, is doing something incorrect, you should pull their shirt sleeve or their coat tail. And you know what? We're supposed to be better than that. And that's not happening. That is not happening. You have three hundred thousand dollars that's coming to our community. Thank you, Ms. Louie Jean. We love you for it, but we want more. You have, I don't know exacts, four to three million dollars left. And you gotta know, if you've got four million dollars left from this taxes that you have not even been it on or done anything with, it's sitting there. Why can't you go take that money and give to the library? Why can't you go take that money and give for the traffic lights? Why not give us that money in our community? I just, that, I just don't understand. It's not like you don't have any extra money. We'll never, in our lifetime, there's no babies in here. So, in our lifetime, there'll never be another million dollars given to each district like that. It never has happened before, and thanks for the city administrator to even think, or the county administrator to even think about doing something like that. So, let's do what's needed to do with this money. If you guys could come to our meeting, we have local meetings, white and black, Mexicans and all come in. One little old white lady came in there. She said, she showed pictures, and I think you got the pictures, when she's in her house, she has to step out of a foot of water because of the flooding. Because of the flooding. And like my partner said, it's work that needs to be done that we pay tax dollars for, to clean ditches. So, to get a ditch, we already paid for, the employees are already paid their salary. That's already in the budget. The dump trucks, all that stuff. Why we gotta pay for them to come out, out of this three hundred thousand dollars for them to clean out these ditches? I don't understand that part. I do understand that the county still pays for whatever internal when somebody needs something, but I don't understand why we gotta spend all our money on that. Because that's where the three hundred thousand is going to go probably, just to clean out the ditches. Then what? It's an upkeep. If we need to get the sewer cut, whatever we need, and I'm through with the old, and that's the way it used to be. It shouldn't be because that's the way it used to be. We should do things because it's the right way to be. We got to do better. We demand better. I work every day. I drive a hundred and twenty-plus miles every day. And I demand better. And it's you guys, you, the seven of you, we hold y'all accountable. Y'all represent Georgetown. If we ever fail for whatever reason, it's going, there's nobody else, there's nobody else behind you guys, except the citizens. But when Georgetown fails, that is upon you guys. Let's stop doing things because that's the way it always used to be. Just like the, I'm gonna take, that's my time. Thank y'all very much.
Leola Thompson.
I'm Leola Thompson from the St. Luke community. I'm here speaking on behalf about the Church of God and true holiness and the cemetery. A few years ago, the Church of God purchased, I don't know how, I think about three point acres right in my front yard, right across, for a church, for some reason that the church didn't go through. So, now what they want to do is put a graveyard right there. My front yard is here, and the graveyard will be here. I'm speaking against that. First of all, our community is not big enough for two cemeteries. We already have a community cemetery, but the problem is that they said that they don't want to pay to be buried in that cemetery. Even though all of their ancestors and their family is back in the St. Luke graveyard, they still want their own. Not realizing we have a community center back there where we have baby showers, car shows, birthdays, reception, they're all right back there. So, they're getting ready to do a whole lot of work on that building, to upgrade it, to bring people in. You know when people say, well, where can I have a baby shower? Oh, come down to our area. We have a nice community center back there. You can have a baby shower and everything. They don't realize that where the community center at, right across that area, there's people down on Hayfield Road, they don't have the community water. They have pump water. Imagine a graveyard right here, your home right here, and it is pump water. That is not good. They say they're willing to put a border around it. It's in the middle of our community. We have a church right in front of the graveyard. People live in front of the graveyard. But still yet, they just determined to have their own cemetery. I'm speaking against it because it's in my front yard. When I walk out my door, cemetery. When I mow my lawn, cemetery, right there. That I don't think I could deal with. Yeah, just the emotional mentality of the graveyard is how you look at it. I buried my mom a few years ago. I buried a daughter, buried a son. I don't want that to be a repeat, a reminder. The thing that they say, out of sight, out of mind, put, I don't want to see that every day. Where they're at now, I'm very well satisfied. I could go visit, which I haven't, because I haven't gotten up that nerve yet. But you can go back there and visit, but you don't have to be reminded every day with the graveyard in the middle of our community. It's actually in the middle. One neighbor just built a beautiful home right down the street from us. You know, and we got to know each other, we, Saturdays, we sit outside and listen to their music and stuff, and it's neat. We have a quiet, quiet community. But the graveyard will be a downfall. It will bring down our property values and everything else, and it's not a good area. They say they would keep it up. Don't believe that. They won't. For a few years, yeah, they'll do good. If a board fall down here, a board, they might put it up. But as these older people move on, these younger people is not gonna do it. Because you know what? They're leaving. They're not gonna stay. So, what we want to do is build that property up. Mr. Cox, he already clear cut that area back there, he's gonna sell it in house plots for people want to buy, but guess what? The big border where the graveyard is right there, block everybody off. The community center and everything will be blocked off by that graveyard and this border. We don't want that. We want to upgrade our community. We want a beautiful community. We want our kids to come back. You know, look at St. Luke. It's small, but it's nice. It's really nice. So, what I'm asking you is to please don't let this go through. Not a graveyard in the middle of our community. Look out for our seniors that's over there that doesn't have city water. They have well water. And a lot of people in our community doesn't know, but thank you anyway.
Chris Anderson.
I have something to say that's off topic. Is that okay? It's about the mask mandate. Should I wait until next month, or is it okay?
Yes.
It's okay. Also, not to be, not that the topic is any more important than what other folks have said, but I wrote something, it's almost two pages long, and I fear it's gonna go longer than five minutes. I don't know if I have to ask for special permission to go beyond five minutes. 1 Corinthians 1:27, "But God has chosen the foolish things of the world to put to shame the wise, and God has chosen the weak things of the world to put to shame the things which are mighty." Never has this verse been more true than today, "For I lived the fool's life. But our Father has chosen me to speak to the body of Christ in Georgetown County, the whole body, covering all denominations who serve the Lord Jesus Christ and know him to be God. Our Father is grieved, and his anger nears, for we have become the wicked servant, given the one talent, and have buried it. And they will know we are Christians by our love, as a staple of our worship services. But the county doesn't know us by our love, and know us by our hypocrisy." In Matthew 22:36-40. Teacher, which is the great commandment in the law? Jesus said to him, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, and with all your soul, and with all your mind. This is the first and great commandment, and the second is like it. You shall love your neighbor as yourself. On these two commandments hang all the law and the prophets." God has given us just two things to do, and we have failed. As a result, the adversary has been given authority in the body of Christ here. We have given him permission to take his home and our churches by our wickedness. He has manifested himself in several ways. Number one, slothfulness. Proverbs 18:9, "He who is slothful in his work is brother to him who is a great destroyer." Number two, cowardice. Revelation 21:7 and 8, "He who comes shall inherit all things, and I will be as God, and he shall be my Son. But the cowardly, unbelieving, abominable murderers, sexually immoral sorcerers, idolaters, and all liars shall have their place in the lake which burns with fire and brimstone, which is the second death." I personally find it frightening that cowardice is within this group, for I too am guilty. Racism, number three, the media's favorite topic, for we are inundated with it. They take great joy in their work to separate us from one another, and they have been successful. We cannot have racism without hatred. Racism is the culmination and fruit of the church's sins, for hatred is the opposite of love, and God is love. Therefore, we who are guilty have become the enemy of God, and nearly all my brothers and sisters in Christ are guilty. This cancer has permeated every denomination and every color. The state of our current world has been allowed by God because of the sins just mentioned. The church and its sin is why we are here, and this is proof. 2 Corinthians 7:14, "If my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves, and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin, and heal their land." There is a remnant in the local church that has been faithful to pray for this day to come. It is the result of their steadfast prayers that in the name of the Lord has brought this fool here with such a joyous message to repent and come back to him. For the Lord, in his vast mercy, has a deal for us, a commandment, so to speak. He desires to pour out a spirit upon the land and has chosen our county as one of the starting points because of the faithful prayers of the remnant among us. Here's the deal. Every white follower of Jesus Christ who is God that is in earshot of these words shall go to their pastors and tell them that they are to close the doors of their church this Sunday. Mister pastor, you are to take your flock with their worshipful heart, with their joy, love, and humility, and all their ties to the nearest church that houses your local black brothers and sisters. Greet them with a holy kiss, hug them, and with God's love, bless them with your kind words. To every black follower of Jesus Christ who is God that is in earshot of these words shall go to their pastors and tell them that they are to close the doors of their church this Sunday. Mister pastor, you are to take your flock with their worshipful heart, and with their love and joy and humility, and all their ties to the nearest church that houses your local white brothers and sisters. Greet them with a holy kiss, hug them with God's love, and bless them with your kind words. To be clear, no one is to close their church doors permanently, but this is to become a regular thing, for we are to mingle amongst one another." May I continue? In my estimation, my personal estimation, eighty percent of our church leaders are guilty of this cowardice. They do not preach the meat of the word because of numerous fears. For Proverbs nine, ten, and eleven tells us, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and the knowledge of the Holy One is understanding. For by me your days will be multiplied, and years of life will be added to you. Not the fear of anything else will save us. Any pastor who has complied with tyranny has not acted wisely and is guilty of cowardice. If they do not repent, then fire them, and find another who will serve the Lord with the heart of David when faced with Goliath." God has allowed the current state of affairs to reveal to us whom we really fear. Why would anyone from the outside looking in want to be a Christian when we cave so easily? Where is the security in God when his followers don't even live like they believe? Have we not been told that faith without works is dead? I'm not talking about the obvious works, reading the Bible, praying, serving the church, because Matthew 7:22 and 23 tells us, "Many will say to me in that day, 'Lord, Lord, have we not prophesied in your name, cast out demons in your name, and done many wonders in your name? And then I will declare to them, 'I never knew you; depart from me, you who practice lawlessness.'" Anyone who fears anything more than God is in great error. Jordan Peterson was once asked when interviewed, "Do you believe in God?" He thought for a moment and responded with the most glorious and simple answer I've ever heard to that question, stating, "I act as if God exists," which is exactly my definition of belief. Either God is God or he is not. If we, who claim the title of Christ follower, did as Jordan Peterson states, the whole world would see that Jesus is God. Brennan Manning, once a monk, stated, "When doing becomes divorced from being, pious thoughts become a poor substitute for washing dirty feet." pious thoughts become a poor substitute for washing dirty feet." We are to declare the majesty of God. We are to declare that he is the only God, the only way, the only truth. Why should the world believe us when we refuse to die to self daily? We have been given the pearl of great price and we have buried it. The world is going to hell and our actions scream, "We don't care." We have forgotten so quickly to share this priceless pearl. This is what God is trying to tell us. If we cower and complain, submit and whimper every time adversity knocks on our door, that tells the world there is no God.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Will you just go ahead and make your conclusive remarks?
Yes, sir. I have maybe two more minutes.
Now, just go ahead and conclude. Thank you.
There was a bill submitted to Congress on May 1st, 2020, directly related to contract tracing. Its House Bill number is H.R. 6666. Bill Gates also took out a patent cryptocurrency system using body activity. Here's a small explanatory excerpt. "The cryptocurrency system, and communicatively coupled to the device of the user, may verify if the body data satisfies one or more conditions set by the cryptocurrency system and award cryptocurrency to the user whose body activity data is verified." The patent number is 2020-0606. We are in the, we are in deep, we are deeply in revelation. And the mark of the beast is upon us, and the Antichrist is soon to be here. If we cannot say to a mask, how, how will we ever say no to the mark? May those who have ears to hear hear what the Spirit of the Lord is saying to the church. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your comments and concerns. We're moving down to the approval of minutes. You have all received a copy of our March 9th, 2021 minutes in your package. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Council March 9th meeting as submitted?
I make a motion we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. There are two matters on the consent agenda which have been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number 21-018, replacement of nine Chevrolet Tahos for the sheriff's office. And procurement number 21-002, aerial mosquito, adulticide, and larceny spray services. We're moving down to our public hearings. We have a public hearing on ordinance number 21-08, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year operating budget of Georgetown County. The floor is not open for comments on ordinance number 21-08. Having seen or heard any comments, the floor is not closed. We are, we announced our resolutions and proclamations. A resolution number 21-04 to declare April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. Who's going to present the, is there someone to present the resolution?
This is a resolution that council adopts on an annual basis in accordance with National Fair Housing Month, which is April every year. Council has adopted this every year for the past decade or more, and we recommend that you adopt it.
Thank you. And a copy of the resolution has been placed in each council member's packet, has it not? Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 21-04?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation for the adoption of resolution number 21-04, recognizing April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in Georgetown County.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion passed. We move on down to our third reading of ordinances. First one is ordinance number 21-05, an ordinance allocating the remaining 2014 capital project sales tax surplus proceeds for the capital projects and other matters related thereto. And it'll be presented by our county administrator.
Good evening. We have made the various revisions on the ordinance as we have outlined. That information is before you. The total is still the same at $7 million, as we had discussed for several meetings now. And we have made that additional adjustments, and they were three. One dealt with Dandy Island for $22,000. One was an adjustment for Spring Gully at this time. The amount for the library was adjusted, and we reallocated as instructed. We'll be glad to answer any questions you may have at this time.
There any questions for Madam Administrator? Is there a motion for approval of ordinance number 21-05?
Ordinance number 21-05.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
As Madam Administrator stated, there are certain amendments made to that particular ordinance. Is there a motion to amend ordinance number 21-05 to incorporate those amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do amend to incorporate the proposed tax amendments and revisions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We'll go forward and vote, any discussion? We'll go forward and vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendments? Oppose? Now, let's go back to the regular motion. Are there any discussion on the regular motion now? All in favor of the motion as amended? Oppose? Okay, motion passed. We move down to ordinance number, third reading approval of ordinance number 21-08, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 21 operating budget of Georgetown County. Ms. Langston.
Okay. This is ordinance number 21-08 to amend the fiscal year 21 budget for the items included in your attachment. It's insurance claims reimbursements and funding for expenses associated with the cyber intrusion. And we did add Section 3 since second reading, that is to provide for funding for the Pollys Island magistrate contract. Staff requests that you approve third reading of this ordinance 21-08. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or try to.
Any questions for Ms. Langston? Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 21-08?
Motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
And as Ms. Langston stated, there have been some amendments to the initial ordinance. Is there a motion to amend ordinance number 21-08 to incorporate those amendments?
I'll move to motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll take up the motion on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Well, any, any discussion first? All in favor of the amendment? Please signify. Oppose? Okay, amendment passed. Now, let's go back to the, the main motion. All in favor of ordinance number 21-08 as amended? Are there any questions, discussions on this first? I'll get it together soon. All in favor of the amended motion? Please let it be known. Oppose? Amendment passed. We move it down to second reading of ordinances. Second reading of ordinance number 21-010 to rezone the three acre parcel located on the east side of Rosier Road at its intersection with St. Luke Trail and Rich Lane from Village 10,000 square feet residential to one acre residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Good evening. This is a request from Mr. Christopher Frazier. He is an agent for trustees of the Church of God and True Holiness. And he's applying to rezone this property from VR 10 to one acre residential or R1 zoning. This property is currently vacant, and they are proposing to use it for a cemetery. The church owns the parcel, however, it is not located adjacent to the existing church. So the cemetery cannot be considered an accessory used to the church. It has to be in a district that lists a cemetery as a permitted or conditional use. Prior to the construction of their church, the members of this church used what is referred to as the community cemetery, which is owned by St. Luke's Church. However, there has apparently come up the question of a yearly fee, a maintenance fee, or a monthly fee to utilize the cemetery. So the church is attempting to construct their own cemetery in a way to avoid those fees. Cemeteries are listed as a conditional use in the R1 zoning district. The only condition is that the cemetery cannot contain a crematorium. The adjacent properties in this area are all zoned VR 10. This property is large enough in size that spot zoning should not be an issue. It is three acres. There is an adjacent GC district that's approximately two acres. As the earlier speaker mentioned, the St. Luke Park and Community Center owned by the county is located about eight hundred feet behind the proposed cemetery on Rich Lane. And there is currently a natural buffer between the community center and the adjacent single family residences. This same rezoning change was requested back in March of 2015. The planning commission at that time recommended approval for the rezoning change. However, county council denied this request at second reading. There were two residents that spoke at that time in opposition to the request. This parcel, along with adjacent parcels in the area, are all designated as medium density on the future land use map. R1 fits under the low-density designation. Staff did speak with those in opposition to the cemetery as was requested by the planning commission. Since this is not a planned development or a flexible design district, there's not too much we can do in terms of buffers and adding additional conditions or requirements to make the cemetery more palatable. We did talk about potentially rezoning a smaller area and leaving the remaining portion as somewhat of a buffer. That did not seem to address the residents' concern. I think they are opposed to any size cemetery at this particular location. We also received several letters in opposition to the requests that are included in your packet. The planning commission held a public hearing on this item at their February 18th meeting. The applicant was there along with three community residents who spoke in opposition to the cemetery. And at this meeting, the planning commission did recommend denial of the rezoning request with a vote of six to zero. I'll be glad to answer or attempt to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson?
Ms. Richardson, did the planning commission take a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
What was the vote?
They recommended denial for the rezoning, six to zero unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr.?
Is there any further comments or questions for Ms. Richardson? Is the?
It's for the denial. Holly, do you remember?
I think it was pretty much based on the community opposition.
Okay.
Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 21-10?
I make a motion. I make a motion that we can put this right, we deny this request.
There's a motion to deny the request. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The, Mr. Chairman, I've spoken with quite a few of the residents in the St. Luke community, and the majority of them appear to be against this rezoning request.
Again, there's a motion and a second to deny the request? All in favor of the motion? Let it be known.
That is to deny, right?
That is to deny. The motion is to deny. Request is denied. There's, there are a few first reading of ordinances, and we'll just read the first, read it into the record. Ordinance number 21-12, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalorum taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Lambert 1 LLC to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes with respect to a project, authorizing special source revenue credits and other related matters. Ordinance number 21-13, an ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina, approving an agreement for the enlargement of the Joint County Industrial Park by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and other matters related to the foregoing Lambert 1 LLC. Ordinance number 21-14, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of avalorum taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Lambert 2 LLC to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes with respect to a project, authorizing special source revenue credits and other related matters. And ordinance number 21-15, an ordinance of Georgetown County, South Carolina, approving an agreement for the enlargement of the Joint County Industrial Park by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and other matters related to the foregoing Lambert 2 LLC. We'll move on down to reports to council. Mr. Is? Maybe we have a, maybe we have a motion to go into executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We will move into, any discussion? Okay. All in, all in favor? Okay, we're moving to executives, motion passed. We're moving to executive session to discuss economic development contractual matter.
We are back. Is there a motion to come out of executive session? Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to come out of executive session? We have returned from executive session to discuss a legal briefing regarding the economic development contractual matter. Is there a motion regarding our discussion regarding the economic development contractual matter?
I move. I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, said motion.
I oppose.
Motion passed. Is there attorney?
I think everybody can hear me now. I apologize, the microphone's not working. It's my understanding that Mr. Anderson made a motion coming out of executive session as relates to the economic development matter. I believe, and I don't want to...
Correct.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Anderson was making a motion to authorize the chair to execute the discussed contract as part of the economic development matter. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record and for councils. That correct?
I concur.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other business to come before counsel? Any other motion to adjourn? Will you stand adjourned?